Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lundary Town Council meeting for March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. For the, you know, we all see the atrocities going on over in Ukraine. Let's, let's hope some sense comes to all this and, you know, the madness stops. So let's, let's pray for those people's safety. Thank you. First order of business is town council reorganization. I'll accept a motion for chairman.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, for Chairman and Vice Chairman. John Farrell for Chairman and Joe Green for Vice Chairman.
Second. All is in favor, so come by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business, public comment. I have on my agenda here tonight a part-time retiring insurance discussion with Chief Hart.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so before the chief, I'll just set the scene by saying that there have been questions that have arisen at least one public hearing on the budget and then at the last town council meeting that occurred late last month. And that discussion was, or that concern was twofold.
Thank you.
The first concern was that there, there seemed to be a lot of unfilled positions at the Police Department and Fire Department. And secondly, a concern was expressed around the provision of health insurance benefits to part-time retired employees. Chief Hart is here to address that and to speak, to speak to that because there are some particular conditions that are prevailing right now that affect both the Police Department and the Fire Department. And I thought that Chief Hart could speak best to that. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Hart to address.
Chief, if you could, hold on one thing. I forgot to do something and I'm remiss in duties. I should have done it before I called for public comment. First of all, Chad Franz, welcome. Congratulations on your, on your race. Race well-run, you know, welcome to the council. Council, liaisons, I don't have a list of liaisons, but, you know, think about what it is you want to do for the next year. Traditionally, the rookie counselor gets some of the, as dev experience, gets some of the more interesting assignments. We'll leave it at that. So we can shake things up. I'll have Kirby send them out and let me know if there's things that you want to do differently. But welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, good evening, and let me offer my congratulations to you, Mr. Chair, and Council of France, well done, and look forward to working with you in, in the interest of the town going forward. So let me take the two questions as they come. First is the open positions. We typically, over the last four years, have run about seven open positions per year. So we want to take a look at those open positions in a yearly basis because they, it's challenging to say that there are, in fact, open positions. Because we, during that four-year period beginning seven, one, eighteen, we've had a change of personnel of thirty-eight people. Nineteen have gone, actually twenty have gone, including recently Captain Gandia, and seventeen folks have been hired. So if we look at that as a percentage of the total sworn officers who are on deck, that's more than a third of the Police Department has shifted in the last, less than four years. What does it take to hire a police officer? Typically, an uncertified person, it's at least a year and a half from the moment they submit their police app, application, to the time when they're released from field training. That's a minimum time. It's about a year for a certified officer. Over that same period, that last four-year period, we've looked to hire more certified officers, provided, of course, that they are the type of officer who would work well in the Lundary environment. We have a specific community, a specific trust bond with our community, and that takes a specific person to work that. So our hiring process is tough and specific, and our background process is tough and specific. The quantifiable results of that background process and that hiring process are low complaints. We have an average of ten complaints per annum, low uses of force, and we're an overdokumenter when it comes to use of force. We have probably twenty to twenty-five total uses of force. While the last couple of years are not really exemplify our usual number of arrests because of COVID and some changes in policies that we've made internally, typically, we arrest over the last two, three years about five hundred people, so twenty to twenty-five have resulted in a use of force that was reportable. About half of those are based on policy. So we're looking for a particular type of officer, and those seven open positions have, as I like to say internally, churned over the year. They're not the same seven people because it takes that amount of time to hire somebody, whereas somebody leaves, they typically give a month, two weeks notice and let, let us know that they're on the way out. The unusual circumstance, as with, say, Captain Gandia, is when we get a lot of lead time. Most of the time, somebody gives more notice. The other thing to contemplate within this construct is, we went thirty-some-odd years without losing anybody to any other police agency or somebody pre-retirement who had left the job. And this year, we've had three. Three people who were not yet retirement-eligible, people with ten, twelve, twelve years on the job who left the job, in two cases for better money, in all cases for better hours and better opportunity for them. So the last thing to consider is, and we go through this every budget season, is that some of the larger line items that we have are not appropriately funded. You know, that's nobody's fault. We, we live under the political constraints, and you, as a council, have hired me and the Fire Chief and other department heads to manage the budget to the line that we're given, and I do so happily. But that also means that we have to manage those open positions in order to pay the electric bill, to pay the fuel bill. We all know fuel's going up this year. To pay the maintenance of the building. You have entrusted to the Police Department the single most valuable capital structure in the town, probably valued at eight or nine million dollars right now. So we have to manage that budget, and that's what this is really all about. So that's the explanation for the open positions. Happy to take questions, but before that, let's move to the part-time positions. It is commonplace in politics to say politics, government should run like a business. And in some cases, that's sloganeering, but in other cases, it's not. And in this case, it was not. We knew what we were facing as we came into the COVID times. We knew what we were facing and the challenge it is to recruit people to become police officers. And so we thought we might deal with this creatively. And the concept was pushed by the fact that when we hired the Conservation Ranger in partnership with the Conscom now nearly three years ago, it looked like we were able to do it for one cost, and it turned out that that just didn't work for the employee. And when we searched for the possibility of other employees, it just wouldn't work. So we looked at creative ways to do it. And the best way we were able to do that was craft a specific category of employee who could get the, who work on a part-time basis but could have access to health insurance. So this was not an easy thing to do. We worked with Health Trust NH, we worked with the retirement system, we worked with HR, we worked with the town manager, we worked with finance to come up with a way to do this in an effective manner. And frankly, the, the push across the finish line came in the use of the stipend, which folks in certain circumstances are given to defray the overall costs of insurance. Folks like, for an example, former Officer Bouchard gets a stipend to defray the cost of his insurance. People who are on the rolls as group two employees on January thir, June thirtieth, two thousand, or before, qualify for that subsidy if they retire after twenty years. So all three of our part-time employees met that qualification. So we were able to defray some of the cost of the health insurance and turn a full-time position, the vehicle technician, into a part-time position, savings, savings across the board in terms of the total nut of the town for insurance, and gain three police officers at a time when we're chronically understaffed. So it seemed to me, and a choice echoed and supported by HR, finance, the town manager, that this was the direction we should go in. So these are full-time certified, part-time officers. They can work, do anything a police officer does, they can respond to calls and have, they can manage traffic and have, provide support when we have major guests like President Trump or President Biden visit our community, they help out. So happy to take any questions. I know that's kind of a high-level overview.
Mr. Chairman.
So if I may, I'm trying to remember the history on the part-time officers. There was a conversation a few years ago about, you know, we hadn't been going down this route. We had been going down the path of putting expansion of the Police Department or Fire Department on the ballot and having the people, and Public Works, and having the people vote. And they voted for us to increase services. I'm trying to remember, I think it was at one of the deliberative sessions, it was brought up around, why don't we use part-time officers? I believe it was a couple of years ago, and it was at that time you said you would consider it. Is this part, is this the result of that conversation?
Yes and no. So the concern with part-time officers is, is as we went down the Calea Road, which I'm glad to say, under the leadership of, excuse me, Captain Mark Morrison, we achieved last November, it became clear that part-time officers, as described in New Hampshire, simply wouldn't work for us. The reason for that is because they're capped on hours at thirteen fifty-two per annum, but they're required to, by Calea guidance, to maintain the same level of training that a full-time officer is, which for us is about, when you include firearms, two hundred hours. So from a part-time perspective, just doesn't make sense. It just doesn't work. That said, under the Calea guidelines, if a person is full-time certified, as these three part-time officers are, you can have them work for you because they can. They have the training and they can continue to do the training. So they do their eight, or I think this year it's going to be twenty-four hours, and their sixteen hours of firearms for forty hours. Given that these three individuals are task-specific employees, in other words, they have a very specific role to play, we don't offer the same kinds of training to them that we might, for an example, to me or a patrol officer or a detective. So it does solve the problem with these three officers. It probably will not going forward.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were, I want a clarification on that. Thank you. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just amplify a couple of the points that the police chief made. The first is that I just want to acknowledge and recognize the fact that the chief knows, that Deputy Chief Bernard knows, and that I know, having worked at the Police Department for the last four years as the prosecutor, and that is that it's a really hard time to be a police officer in America. And that is something that's actually borne out by the analysis that we did. And so whereas we had three open positions by our count in two thousand and sixteen, one open position in two thousand and seventeen, in a lot of the recent years, we've had six, eight, seven, and that's because of the one step forward, two steps back that the chief alluded to. I just wanted to make, make it clear that our analysis actually bore out that phenomenon. The second thing, Mr. Chairman, is that five things happened here surrounding these part-time officers, and the five things were this. We took a full-time patrol officer and turned him into a part-time fleet manager. We took a full-time sergeant and turned him into a part-time animal control officer. We took the Conservation Ranger, who was already on the books, and we extended him insurance, again, not at the full freight, but factoring in the subsidy that he gets as a retiree. Number four, we actually increased the ACO's hours over and above what they, what they were, and that was in response to complaints and a heavy usage, if you will, that we got around that position. And it really corrected that problem, I think, to where we're, we're happy with the level of service that we can provide in that area today. And lastly, the, the last thing that happened around these part-time officers is, we left vacant the fleet manager's position. He was formerly a, a full-time police officer, all for a savings of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, one of the things that these part-time officers were able to do during the pandemic was to provide coverage over and above what they were, what, what, what we hired them to do. So the Conservation Ranger, he was able to up his hours and provide COVID coverage to backfill when folks were out on quarantine. Those are some of the benefits and some of the reasons this, this transpired the way it, it did, and I just want to make, make that known to the public.
Yeah, if I could, one follow-up on that is, so whereas myself, Deputy Chief Bernard and before him Deputy Chief Dusel responded to perhaps a call every other week, reference animal control, we've had one call in this fiscal year, and I might say that the town clerk likes me again because for, for a time when we couldn't hire an ACO, there was bad blood.
Okay. We're in public comment. On, on this subject only, is there anyone who would like to speak to this? And then I'll move to further public comment. Thank you.
Daniel Bouchard, O'Connell Drive, Lundary. First of all, when you talk about part-time officers, this is exactly what I was pushing for back then. I wasn't looking for, to hire, and I said this numerous times, I wasn't looking to hire some Joe Green and hire him as a part-time officer. I was looking at full-time people that were going to be relieving, all right, and you could retain them as part-time, which is what you've done, which is great.
Yeah, I wasn't going to steal your thunder, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
I wasn't going to steal your thunder. I know it was you who brought it up.
I know, I know. But, and I, and I've written everything out because I don't want to get sidetracked.
Please proceed.
So in two thousand, two thousand and nineteen, the budget process, well, first of all, I want to say that I'm glad this came out because you guys always say transparency. To me, this should have been brought out before now, okay? And just said, this is what we're going to do. This is what we have to do to retain these people, you know? So in two thousand and nineteen, during the budget process, when they were talking about hiring a conservation officer, all right, the police chief was there and the budget was for seventy-five thousand dollars. And the cost was to pay for equipment, like a trailer, tow the four-wheeler, and salary. And it was very clear, no medical benefits. So the last time I came in front of the council, I asked about the medical benefits being paid to part-time employees. The council did not seem to be aware that this position was being, was getting, you know, paid medical benefits.
Correct.
Excuse me. Let me shut this thing off. So this position was presented to the taxpayers and told that no medical benefits would be paid. This was said more than once by Chief Hart. Nothing ever came up to the council or the taxpayers requesting to change this. The sidebar was signed on six eighteen, two thousand and twenty, almost two years that this has been going on without the knowledge of the council or the taxpayers, all right? I hear it all the time, transparency, we want to be transparent, okay? And that's what I want to see. So that's why I brought this up. The sidebar increases the pay considerably from what was presented to the taxpayers to vote on. For example, the hourly rate was increased, the cost of medical insurance is an increase. The town is also contributing a thousand or two thousand to the person for family coverage towards their HSA, four hundred dollars towards uniform. That's just part of it. Sick time, vacation time, okay? When a person builds up that sick time, vacation time, and leaves in ten years, now we're paying that person at a higher rate, okay? I don't understand why these things aren't looked at, okay, during negotiations with contracts and everything else, all right? I would like to see, at the school board, you have a school board member involved in negotiations. We used to have that on the town council. I don't understand why that doesn't happen now, okay? If you research what the New Hampshire retirement pays out for a retired person in group two, which is police and fire, okay? The figure in Lundary over the past ten years is over eighty thousand dollars a year for a retiree. So a retired person from group two collecting from the New Hampshire retirement is also working part-time for the town, according to the town report, had a base pay of forty-one thousand, seven seventy-nine, another pay of nine thousand, six twenty-six, okay? That's a total of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, four oh six. Add the benefits of medical, sick time, vacation time, yearly HSA payments, all right, uniform cleaning. When you mention part-time positions, taxpayers believe that it's a cost savings. I know Mr. Malagati just said, we have three part-timers now, we've saved roughly a hundred thousand dollars, okay? Great. It surely doesn't seem that way when you're looking at the contract, the sidebar that was included in all the paperwork today. So if a person makes over a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, why is the taxpayer paying for these benefits? In two thousand and nineteen, I proposed looking at part-time school resource officers to save money. That was not something that we needed to look at and wasn't going to save money, you know, according to some individuals. So is that, I'm looking at this and I'm saying, is the town better off having one full-time position instead of two part-time positions? You know, if you, if you have two twenty hours, you're paying all this, you know? Why are not, why are not all part-time employees getting the same benefits? So we start here at the Police Department, and do we have part-time employees in other unions in town? Is that going to open up, you know, Pandora's box here, where we're going to be paying benefits? Personally, I want to see all our employees get treated the same. So if we're paying for one, we should be paying for everybody, okay? The acting town manager sent a letter to Senator Carson, Speaker Packard, in your packet, all right? And it says, "There has been an ever-increasing burden on municipal employers and local taxpayers to fund the retirement system." Well, let me make it clear, the taxpayer has already paid into the retirement system for medical coverage. Yes, I do get a stipend, all right? And the taxpayers have paid into that. And I feel now we're paying into it again. We're paying more into medical. I would hope that the council is going to look at this, you know, carefully. So I just want to take it a little closer to home. If you hired someone to do some renovations at your home, and you had budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars for this project, and you agreed the terms and price, you later find out that the individual, individuals changed the terms and increased the price you had already been presented and agreed to, would you be okay with that? Would you say, okay? But if they came up to you and said, hey, we need to change something, it's different. Just don't change it. As far as the positions, the open positions, yeah, I looked at your analysis, you know, your analysis can be changed different ways. I like that Chief Hart said that, you know, on average, he has seven open positions. I, as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about, you know, you hear Chief Hart comes in, you know, the Fire Chief comes in, minimum staffing, minimum staffing, all right? If we have seven open positions, is that a safety issue for our officers out there?
One second. We don't tell them minimum staffing.
No, no, you don't.
I just want to make it clear, it's not, we're not telling.
It's not you. I, I understand that, John. It's not you, okay? But you have, in, in the union contracts, right, chief? Don't, don't you have something about minimum staffing?
Yes.
Okay, all right? So you got to have minimum staffing. And, you know, if we have seven open, open positions, as a taxpayer, I'm like, we should have those seven people there. I know it's a process. I know it's, it takes time to hire, okay? But maybe somebody has to, you know, get a handle on it. I don't know, maybe town manager and the chief have to meet more often and say, okay, how are we doing on staffing, all right? You have seven open positions, but in two thousand and nineteen, we put a warrant article forward for a school resource officer, all right? And we know it's a soft spot with the community. People are going to support that, and people voted it in. But if we already had open positions, why did, why did we need that?
So I'm, I'm not going to get into a whole detail.
I know.
About personnel and everything else tonight. What, what I have experienced with the Police Department over the last two years is, is that when we, when we've been asking about where we stand.
Yep.
And, and on election day, I met four police officers who I hadn't met before, you know, which is sort of unusual, but, and, and they were all quality individuals, pleasant, pleasant to talk to.
And they should be. They work in Lundary.
From what, from what I understand, and that, you know, I think Kim Bernard tracks this closer than maybe than most in the Police Department is, is that, I'll use this as an example, he can correct me, we used to get fifty applicants, now we get five. It's, it's something along those lines. So that finding, you know, the quality police officer that we're looking at has become ten times harder. So been asking the same questions, why can't we fill the positions? And we're saying, well, we just don't want to fill positions with bodies, we want to fill positions with the right bodies. And, and you guys correct me if I'm going down the wrong path here, but that, that's what they've been telling us. So that, that's the answer to your question about the seven. I don't want to get into their whole hiring process and everything else. I mean, we can, if we need to do that at another time.
Yep.
The chief negotiator for the union contract, and would have to have been the person involved with the sidebar, is the town attorney. You can talk to him and get us an explanation of what the process was and why these things were thought out, and please bring that back to us.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. And if I may, before this conversation finishes, I do just have one, one comment that I'd like to address to the chair. As far as the, the suggestion that there was a bait and switch, there was no bait and switch. The chief of police went to his boss, his boss signed the sidebar within the parameters of his authority under the town manager statute and under the town charter. And so I just want to place that on the record for your consideration.
That's fine, and, and we can go back and look at it, and I don't want to have a, you know, I don't want to get into it.
No.
I've already, I've waived all the time limits and everything else.
Yep.
Because I believe when people are concerned about things, we should talk about them. But what I, what I can't do is spend a half an hour on this because I don't have any other answers.
Right.
Or I don't think anybody else here has any other answers. We may have more questions than answers at this point.
I just want to, I just want to clarify.
But I appreciate you bringing it to us.
I just want to clarify one thing, John. Mike, it's not a bait and switch. I never said a bait and switch, okay, whatsoever. So what I'm saying is, this was presented to us, had it brought up in front of the council and say, we're having, you know, issues filling this, this is what route we want to go down, fine. I know it's a bottom-line budget, and, and I've got other issues coming down the road.
Yeah, and I get it, and I understand the question. That's why I want an explanation from the person who, you know, the person who signed it isn't here anymore.
Right.
So I want an answer from the person who did the negotiation.
Yep.
Because I think that's my best path at this point.
Okay.
Unless we should do something else. Should we do something else?
If I could, just address one thing.
Absolutely. I mean, I've, like I said, I've broken all the rules here and we've extended the period. Let's get this done, so.
We've hired nine people this year, that's...
That's a lot of people.
That's fifteen percent of our total workforce. That's a pretty substantial commitment towards hiring people. It is not from lack of trying. And I did want to correct something I misspoke. Minimum staffing isn't in our contract, it is our practice. We do adhere to a three-plus-one as a minimum staffing, three officers, one supervisor. That's all I have.
That's where a safety issue is.
I want to be, I want to be very clear about something, and I believe that the council would agree with me. Nobody here wants anybody to not have the right tools or the right services, and we don't want anybody not to be safe.
Correct.
We want, we want the people who work here to always be safe and have the tools they need. Just to be clear.
I think the town provides that very well. There's no question about it.
The fire chief just texted me and he just said that the fire department has five vacancies, paramedics are difficult to obtain, just got one from Merrimack, three more retirements in the next six months. I think what happened, for a number of years, we had no turnover. Now, everyone's retiring.
But I also know, John, from, you know, being here a long time and working for the town, you know, there was more... There was, you know, people waiting to come in, you know? So I guess...
There's nobody waiting.
It's funny that you say that, because the four new officers I met
Yep.
all told me this was the place they were waiting to come to.
See?
This is where they want it to be.
Well.
Now, you know, I mean, what time, a period, whatever it took them to get here, but this was their landing spot they wanted in the state. So that's, I guess that's the good news. It's still the landing spot.
It is. It's a good, it's a good town, you know, we have great employees. And I just want to make sure that, you know, if we're funding X, you know, get the people there so that, you know, if they're responding to these domestics or whatever, we have the the people there to keep our officers safe and the public safe.
Totally on board, okay? Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Happy to answer any.
Anyone else on this subject? One other gentleman for this subject. Yes, sir.
Richard Polinsky, eighty-nine Hall Road. I guess what brought me out on this is, again, the transparency, I mean, Dan pretty much covered everything. It is, if we're voting on a union contract and it's A, and this gets changed two months later, three months later, it's B, if it has to be changed because that's the only way you're going to get people, the taxpayer needs to know about this. It doesn't have to be the town manager going and signing basically a contract saying, "This is what we're going to do with them", and nobody knows. This happens so many times and so many things in this town, it's annoying. You wonder why you don't get people out to vote? You wonder why people are upset about the taxes in the town? This is it, let it be transparent, get it out there. The fact that supposedly nobody on the council knew that this was done, that's an issue. You guys are at the top in this town, when you look at the chart. Town manager works for you, nobody knew about it? That's bad. They wasn't made aware of, you weren't made aware of it. It should have been discussed. I don't want to get into, "Is this what we have to do, is this how you're going to get people?" The transparency in this town has to change.
Thank you, sir.
Alright? It has to change.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Just hold off. Alright, you all set?
Were you hurrying, trying to get me out of here, John? No, I'm not all set.
And then please proceed.
We've talked before about changing different warrant articles and stuff, there's a procedure. You've got, if you've got a contract that we're voting on, and I believe in two, well, that year, 2020, we voted on a police contract, I don't remember if it passed or not. And two months later, this comes out, you mean to tell me in the two, three months, nobody knew this was coming down the road? And they couldn't have been part of that? Maybe they didn't, but it certainly doesn't seem right. Transparency, let's start using it.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold off, gentlemen, he's done, okay, now please proceed.
Mr. Town Manager. Were we within our rights on the sidebar? Did we do what we could in the framework? That's all I need to know, yes or no? You already answered it once.
Can I just add something to the question? Could you please explain the procedure for the charter and sidebars?
Mr. Chairman, Counselor Butler, in 1996, the people of Londonderry adopted a town charter. We do not have a town meeting form of government any longer, where the citizens get together once a year and vote on the administration of the town. We could go back to that, but I would suggest to you that that is no way to run a town the size of Londonderry with the complexity that we face every day. To answer your question, Counselor Butler, under the charter, the town manager is the chief administrative officer of the town, is responsible for the administrative and financial affairs of the town. Section 4.6(c), the manager shall fix the compensation of all town officers and employees appointed by the manager with the limits established by existing appropriations. RSA 37, general authority of the town manager is responsible for the general supervision and business affairs of the town and the expenditure of monies. The town manager is also responsible for appointing upon merit and fitness alone and removing subordinate officers and employees under his control and to fix their compensation. Additionally, the town manager is to have charge, control, supervision subject to the discretion of the selectmen and to the bylaws of the town, if any, of the following matters, the police and fire departments of the town, if any. So I would suggest to you that we have a modern, efficient form of government that allows matters within the town manager's control to be resolved without waiting for a yearly town meeting or a periodic town council meeting. It was well within Kevin Smith's authority, he exercised that authority appropriately, and that's all I have to say about it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Malaguti, I screwed that up pretty bad, huh? Could you inform the people that are here tonight about the counselor's ability to question managers on dated, the town manager on day-to-day personnel matters? What is our authority in that manner?
Well, Counselor Green, it's an excellent question, and what the, first of all, any counselor can contact the town manager and request information, and that happens almost every day in Londonderry. We do our best to gather information that is the most responsive and the most helpful, not only for counselors, but also for residents. And I can tell you that during the last two weeks, as you can see from my town manager's report, I spent hours on the phone talking to residents, I supplied residents with hundreds of pages of information, and I kept the council informed about my activities and the activities of my department heads and the town staff. It is, it is true that the that the council, a counselor cannot interfere by charter with the day-to-day running of the town. That is grounds for forfeiture of office under our charter. And so there is a balance here between becoming excessively involved in operational matters and leaving those matters within the discretion of the town manager as the citizens determined would be appropriate in 1996 when they approved this form of government.
Thank you.
Now, we, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, John. I just want to say one thing, listening to all of this, I understand where the public is coming from. I don't think anyone said anybody did anything wrong or anything like that. I think they were looking for more of a courtesy informational thing. And I think it's refreshing that you, as a town manager, are now supplying us with what you've done during the week and what's coming up, and keeping a running list of open entries for us to look at as counselors, I think that is unbelievably refreshing to see. But I think it all just comes down to just a common courtesy more than anything else. I don't think anybody in here said anybody did anything wrong or that this was an actual bad thing. It's just, you know, sometimes people get surprised when things happen, and sometimes when there is a change, it is good to be kind of informed, can we change anything? No. But to know about it, so when someone asks you as opposed to broadsiding you, saying, "Hey, did you know? Because you're supposed to know", and you're like, "Uh, no", I mean, it puts you in, you know, I'm sure it's happened to a lot of people who are sitting in a higher position, that you don't want to be caught off guard. And I think that's where the courtesy factor comes in, and then it looks like we're all doing what we're supposed to do. I'm not defending anyone or anything, I'm just saying, this is what I saw happen here, and it's my take on it. That's all, sorry.
Thank you. Anything further?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Counselor Butler.
On this subject, sir? Tom, on this subject?
Can I come up?
Yeah, is it on this subject?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, come on.
Tom Esti.
I just wanted to clear the chief at some point, how are you, Tom? I haven't seen you in a while.
I know. So my point is, was Mr. Bouchard? His point, so is it going to open up a whole can of worms for teachers, highway department, everyone who's on union who wants part-time, they get insurance though?
I don't think so, Tom, I think what we're going to do is, I think we only have one other part-time employee, right off the top of my head. It's not going to have anything to do with the schools because they're a separate form of government. But what we're going to try to find out is, is what, what did the the town manager who has left the organization talk about with the town attorney to come to this determination that this was allowed under the current, you know, rules of engagement? I don't know the answer to that yet until, until, you know, Mike goes and finds out.
I can answer it fairly briefly.
Okay.
At least with regard to insurance and pro-rata benefits, meaning sick time, vacation time, they are limited to these three employees specifically. So that doesn't preclude the notion that another part-time employee might not be eligible.
In another different collective bargaining agreement.
But in terms of the police department's employees and sworn officers, this is the only time, and it's in the sidebar, which I believe is part of the materials, it lays out, "These are the qualifications, without these qualifications, you can't qualify for the position." So it's only those three. Not surprisingly, as you might imagine, this did come up as part of our discussions two years ago now with the union, because they were concerned, would this open up, you know, they were kind of interested, maybe it would open up a door for other part-time benefits, and we, we, meaning Mike, drafted it, and Lisa, drafted it very specifically to limit that opportunity. Not that we don't, you know, want to care for our employees, that's not the issue. We wanted to limit the cost and focus on these three positions specifically.
Yeah, well, I mean, if it was like for a highway department, and you only had to put in twenty hours a week and you could get health insurance, man, I'd love to do that.
You want to sign up?
Yeah, I would probably sign up. I'm self-employed and no one pays my insurance but me.
No, hey, Tom, I hear you, I hear you.
So it's only going to be for these three cops you're saying?
I make it my business, and as I've declared many times here, I do not predict the future. With respect to this matter alone, it is limited to these three people. So could it grow in the future? Possibly, that's a question for negotiation and for consideration.
But we have five other bargaining units, so it would have to be with each individual unit, it would have to be very unique situations under each time we negotiate contracts. For example, the fire department contract that was just done does not have this.
So, I have another question, so for conservation, so, say, years down the road, once this conservation guy retires, and we hire another conservation officer, do you have to be a retired police officer to do conservation?
You don't have to be a retired police officer to do conservation. The way the job description is, it's not a necessity, but something that we look for. To be within this sidebar and the contract, you do have to be a police officer. So when the cons comm and the police department sat down to discuss this, there were a lot of overlap matters where a police officer would be helpful to them and conservation officers would be helpful to the police department. So we determined and came up with that agreement, which, by the way, was in the town meeting in 2019, not 2020, to have a police officer serve as a conservation ranger. Could it be otherwise? Yes.
Because that would be a consideration for me, too. I wouldn't mind driving around the woods on a four-wheeler.
Well, Tom, this isn't a job interview, we can talk.
Alright. So, so down the road, it's not going to come about where the teachers and the highway department, they're going to say, "Hey, we'd like some part-timers", and...
Can't speak for what the teachers are going to do, have no idea, they do, well, they're, you know, I'm not going to say they're on the other side of the street, they're a separate form of government, whatever they do is separate from us. For the highway department, not our intent.
It's what?
Not our intent.
Okay. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Other question?
I was not going to say a word about this. Come on, Mr. God, I was not coming here to say a word.
Okay, is it?
Christine Perez, five Wesley Drive.
Is it on this subject?
Yes. I want to take exception to Chief Hart saying about a business. This town needs to start thinking more about running like a business, because it is a big business. And you have people here, the real world does not get health insurance at twenty hours. The real world out there does not get health insurance at twenty hours a week. But not only that, to take something, I was a nurse. If I needed, if I had needed extra charge nurse, if I needed extra people to come and help me on a particular night, I couldn't just call up somebody and say, "Come on in", I had to go above. You went above to Kevin? The way you made it sound, it sounds like Kevin didn't answer, didn't have to answer to anybody. What you're doing, letting them know what's going on, who fired Kevin? Who fires him? Who hires? I mean, you don't set any guidelines for the people that are going to be running this town?
So let's stop there, alright? Under, under the change in the charter from town meeting
I understand the change.
to SB two,
Yeah.
Kevin did nothing wrong.
No, I'm not saying he did anything wrong.
And as far as transparency goes in this town, there is nothing in this building that is private. Everything is open to everybody. No one tries to hide anything, no one tries to hide anything anywhere. This particular piece, as I've explained on a few different occasions, is, I like a response from the town attorney to why the sidebar came about. I don't know why.
Okay.
I'm going to try to find out.
I understand that, but you say just these, but if you have five people retire next year and turn around and say, "Hey, this is great, what you have, I want to retire, but I want to work part-time because you're going to give me benefits", what is to stop that from happening? And if the DPW wants to do that, you're going to tell them they can't do that? That's discriminatory. I'm just thoughts.
No.
Thoughts.
I understand what you're saying, but it's not...
Run it like a business.
Well, we, well, all I'm going to say is, is that we do run it mostly like a business.
This isn't directed at you in particular.
This isn't, there was an email that went out today, due to the economic conditions that are going on here in the country today. The town manager has now sent out an email, basically what it said was, is we need to run this like a business.
Thank you. But didn't Chief Hart say you don't run it like a business?
What it said was, is government and business are different.
They are different, they are different, but when you have an organization that needs to make money, it's an entirely different world than an organization that just gets money and spends money. And I don't, that's not a negative thing, that's the way it is.
It is a negative thing.
Okay. We've spent forty-five minutes on this.
Yep, goodbye.
I think we're going to, I think, I think we're going to wrap things up on this subject.
Just in time.
Thirty seconds. I've way overextended this.
I'm looking at the sidebar agreement, and it's one thousand three hundred fifty-two hours, correct, for...
Okay, if we're going to talk about the sidebar agreement, we're going to, I'm going to bring the town attorney, and then we'll have a discussion about the sidebar.
I have a very simple question, okay? It's one thousand three hundred fifty-two hours that they can work according to the retirement system, correct?
The short answer is yes, the longer answer is, the governor, as you may recall,
Right.
declared a state of emergency back in March of 2019, 2020, which voided that for a period of about maybe eighteen to twenty months.
Okay. If an officer works, a part-time officer works eight hours detail, does that count towards the thirteen fifty-two?
Yes, so all hours worked counts towards that thirteen fifty-two.
Okay, so this is my problem with this, okay? We hire a conservation officer for twenty hours a week. If he works an eight-hour detail, we're losing eight hours of conservation coverage.
Which is, which is...
Correct?
Which is, yes.
Okay. No.
Dan, Dan.
I'm just trying to figure it out.
What we have in the police department are supervisors who manage the hours and time of these officers. Typically, none of these officers work details unless it's approved by a supervisor and it's in the best interest of the police department. So on occasion, they have lines down, roads closed, that sort of thing. But typically, because it might surprise you to know, we are quite aware of the limitation on hours and try to manage to that, running it like a business, which is what I did say.
That's just my point, John.
So we're going to end this conversation about police and we're going to move on in public comment.
And we'll discuss it again.
Guaranteed. For now, we're going to end. Thank you, Chairman.
My pleasure.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are in public comment. I'm going to look to close public comment no later than 8 o'clock. So if there's anyone else who would like to address the council, please, please come forward.
Hi there.
Hi, sir. Name and address, please.
Sean O'Meara, 16 Farwood Drive. I used to record the school board meetings, so I know how long these meetings can be.
Oh, well, thank you. Welcome.
I'm just, I'm president of the Londonderry High School Green Council. And I know that today we're going to be talking about having a possible member join the solid waste and environmental committee. I'm just wondering what that is.
Sure.
Yeah.
Did you want to discuss that, Mike?
I can set the scene for this, Mr. Chairman.
I did, I did see an email about this. I think it's a very interesting idea.
Yes, so Mr. Wiles, who was on the solid waste and environmental committee, had reached out to me yesterday indicating that there was interest from a student on the high school green council. I'm assuming that's you.
No, actually, that's Ryan. He's up at the meeting right now.
Fantastic. Who had indicated an interest in joining that group. I said that I thought it was, it sounded like a good idea, but I would, I would bring it before the council and see exactly how the council wanted to.
So when they're looking for a voting member more, is it liaison?
Well, there were two options provided. One was to make the student an ex officio member or a full member. I suppose a liaison would work, would work as well. It's really in the council's.
Do they have to be 18?
That is a good question. I will need to research that.
Anyone have an objection to a student getting involved in solid waste?
Not at all.
The more students, the better, as far as I'm concerned. Come on Thursday to my energy meeting.
Yeah, I'm only concerned about the voting piece. I mean, just if they're going to be an ex officio, I think they have to be, you know, registered to vote or be of age or... But yeah, sounds, sounds a good idea. Happy, happy you guys want to get involved.
Fantastic. Yeah, we're very, we're very excited about it.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right, that's all.
I'll research that question further, Mr. Chairman, and provide.
I just don't know the answer.
Neither do I.
Fantastic.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for public comment?
I noticed in your packet of information you have again about the veterans' tax credit. I brought it up to you several months ago, maybe six or eight months ago, that the present credit for veterans was $500 and it can go much higher than that. And I would like to ask again that you all consider raising that tax credit, even if you only raise it $50 this year and maybe 53 years from now. It shows a commitment to the veterans that are here in town. We not just senior veterans, we have veterans of all ages, including Chad. And I just, and this, the world the way it is right now, I think they need to be acknowledged, if not as much as, more than other people. So please take that into consideration to raising the veterans.
Certainly. Yes.
Just wanted to comment on, on her comment, if you don't mind. Mr. Malaguti, how do we have, what is the limits that we can, we can take on that?
So there, Counselor Green, there are two applicable exemptions here. Just for, to orient everybody to what we're talking about here, there's also a disabled veterans' tax exemption. That's not what we're talking about raising here. We're talking about raising the, what's called the optional veterans' tax credit and the all-veterans' tax credit. You could take one or the other. But only one of those two tax credits. Can you also couple that with the disabled veterans' tax credit, is my understanding of how that works. If you were, under, under the state law, we could take both of those credits from five, from $500 to $750. Doing so would cost approximately $230, $31,000. But as Ms. Perez pointed out, we did cost out for you and the, and the finance director supplied that spreadsheet that's in the materials in much smaller increments, up to $750. And so I can, I can tell you, I also heard from a gentleman who I've been talking with over the past month and a half. I heard from him again today, asking for an update on this matter. So it is being discussed out there. We've included this for your consideration and can take it in any direction you desire.
Just to follow up on that, though?
And I believe we did raise the disabled one several years ago. Is that correct?
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
So whenever this topic comes up, we always ask, what's the limit? And we're always pushing, at least as long as I've been here, to push to the limit. And when, when did it become 500 to 750? When exactly was that?
Three years ago, I believe.
It's been a while.
So we, so we did the other tax credit. I think we concentrated on that one.
Correct.
And there was some confusion on this. Well, if this was brought before the council, prior to the budget, if there was a distinction difference, I would have made sure this went in as one of the things to look at because I agree with you. We need, we need to do more.
I did bring it to the council.
Okay. We didn't, I think what happened is I think the two got mixed up, at least in my head. I want you to, on all transparency. I think that we thought, at least I thought, that we were doing the maximum we could. And it sounds like we were on the other one. So I apologize. Thank you for clarifying that. But we'll get to that, absolutely.
And so my understanding was that there was a discussion a couple of years ago. And then that was, at least the gentleman that I've been talking to thinks that COVID then became a reality and it sort of got lost track.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the big thing we need to look at here going is, is that with the rising costs of petroleum, it's going to be the trickle-down effect across all pieces. So if we're going to rise this, if we're going to raise this, I need to know where the money's going to come from because it's got to come from somewhere. And the budget's been approved already, so it's kind of come off somebody's bottom line, not off the taxpayer's bottom line.
Correct.
All right. That's what we're going to need to know.
That's a homework, then. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just, I did confer with the assessor and asked him, you know, could we defer, because to your point, the money needs to come from somewhere, could we decide to do this as part of the next year's budget season? Would that cause a problem in terms of syncing it up with the tax year and the budget season? And he said, no, that that, that could be accomplished.
Want to know where the money's going to come from. All right. Anything else for public comment? Seeing them, seeing them. Public comment is now closed. Okay. Reappointment of the tax collector. So pursuant with RSA 41:33, the undersigned members of the town council, Londonderry, hereby reappoint Allison M. Parsons of 7 Acropolis Avenue, Londonderry, New Hampshire, as the tax collector for a statutory term of one year, which will run from April 1st, 2022, to March 31, 2023. Annual salary for that said position shall be $64,000. Just so you're all aware, we collect somewhere between $80 and $90 million in property taxes that are coming to her responsibility. Do I have any questions? I'll accept a motion.
So move. Second.
Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Ms. Parsons, if you can make sure that you sign everything here before you leave tonight, that would be terrific. I will pass it around the council for signature now.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just say my thanks to Allison. She does a great job collecting all that money that we need and my thanks to her.
Okay. Old Business None, approval of minutes with Chad's abstention, approval of minutes for February 22nd, 2022.
Would you make a motion to approve?
Any a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative.
One abstention.
One abstention. Liaison reports. Anybody have anything interesting? All right, so what we're going to do about the liaison reports is, is we're going to take a look at what we have everyone assigned to, see if anybody wants to make any changes. And there'll be some changes that, you know, we probably want to, you know, talk about, such as, you know, planning board and land use boards and stuff like that, which usually goes to the least senior council so that they can learn the process. But we can talk about that. Town manager report. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a few items to, to highlight. I'm happy to report that the assessor received 38 abatement applications for the Forest Hills community. There have been 33 units that have had full interior inspections that have been conducted. Follow-up requests for the units that have not been inspected are going out and he expects to have some answers beginning in April. The veterans' tax credit was discussed. I have some deliverables to supply to you for the next meeting. As far as water quality is concerned, obviously, I'm happy to report that the, studying the water, the water system expansion article passed. I'm also happy to report that we were able to secure grant funding of $50,000 to offset that $100,000 appropriation. And so that is part of our effort to try to offset funds that are raised through taxation and to try to return some of those monies to the taxpayer. We are going to be inviting the Department of Environmental Services down for a meeting soon to discuss those ongoing efforts and some next steps. Old Home Day meeting is this Wednesday at 6:00 PM in the Moose Hill Room.
Yeah, I'll be away, but I'll call in.
Very good. It is a 6:00 start. I believe ZBA does start at 7:00, so we will try to keep it on track as much as possible, Mr. Chairman. Moose Hill Orchards, the lease that I came before you to discuss in prior meetings, those two leases for 114 Pillsbury Road have been signed and executed. They are effective March 15th. I was also approached by Mr. Crestenson, who is Andy Mack's successor, looking to discuss and getting an early jump on it, the terms of a longer lease arrangement for that parcel. I supplied you with a term sheet in your packet where he raises some of the things that he would be looking for and some of the offers that he could make to the community. I'm not sure that that is ripe for action or discussion at this point in time.
I want to see how things go a little bit.
Very good.
I mean, anybody want to do anything different? I mean, we're only, see how the second year goes.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, the assistant town manager is on vacation, a hard-earned vacation this week, and so she will not be delivering an assistant town manager report.
Obviously. Okay. As far as the election was concerned, 4,000 or 4,000 people voted. That's the first time since 2003. Believe it or not, the cemetery failed by about 40 votes, which 40, 42, 42 votes. So there'll be no expansion of the cemetery, so everybody has to stay around.